The roll call.
Mrs. Merrill.
President.
Mr. Steigl.
Mr. Art Curry.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here. Stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item we have tonight is a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the Peters Township's zoning ordinance regulating commercial wireless communication facilities. Mr. Lauer.
On August of 2018, the Federal Communications Commission adopted a declaratory ruling regarding wireless infrastructure, and that ruling was to remove barriers to broadband deployment. The reality is that our existing ordinance, in terms of substance, is in conformance with that decision of the FCC. In terms of form, it was necessary to make changes. So despite the fact that what you're going to be asked to do is to adopt this change to the zoning ordinance and repeal the existing sections, the reality is it changes very little in terms of substance. So one of the problems is, and anybody who has a cellphone and uses it throughout Peters Township, you know, is that there's this balancing act between having cell towers and therefore having good cellphone service and high-speed internet, and this is balanced against the appearance of towers, which people perceive as being undesirable in their neighborhoods. And where the township has ended up with regard to this, and this new ordinance just reiterates it, but underpins it with the decision from the FCC, is that conventional wireless towers, these single towers that we're all familiar with, will continue to only be allowed to be located in the industrial zones if they're standalone. If in fact they can be located on existing structures, they can be put into any zoning district. So if you think about this, there are towers that sit in the storage facility that Mr. Robinson owns off of Valley Brook Road. Then you also see co-located facilities on top of high-tension power structures in the township. So that's how, for the most part, conventional towers are handled. What is coming down the road, and what is all the talk about, is how do you deliver 5G service? And 5G service relies upon lots of mini towers, towers that look like this. And for them, their service area is actually fairly small. But at the same time, we have so many housing plans where you have only underground utilities. And most people are not going to want to see that pole in their front yard. So what the FCC has said is that wireless carriers need to be treated as all other utilities. So in our case, we have the ability, and our current ordinance reflects this, and the new ordinance reflects this, is that no wireless structure, no of these wireless small structures will be permitted in residential areas where you have underground utilities. They can be located where there is overhead utilities. In fact, we have a few in town already that are co-located on telephone poles. What will be interesting to see as 5G begins to be deployed is whether or not those limitations, in effect, make it difficult, if not impossible, to deliver 5G service in residential sections of Peters Township. But I think this is something we need to pay attention to and look at going forward. The other thing that the FCC ruling provides for, it allows us to establish design standards for these poles, because this kind of 5G tower can take any form, and what we would not want to see in Peters Township if they end up in residential districts eventually, is a telephone pole placed in someone's front yard for the purposes of hanging the tower. So we would attempt, when new poles go up, to make sure that they have at least some aesthetic quality to them instead of just a telephone pole.
I thought we couldn't restrict the 5G towers in any area.
We, our current ordinance says 5G towers can be located along collector and connector roads. So what they are, these are all places where you see telephone poles. It prohibits them within residential neighborhoods.
You wouldn't have an autonomous car crash into someone's house then.
But this ordinance reflects that. It prohibits them in areas where you have underground utilities.
Do these have any auxiliary structures associated with them?
This tower is representative of what you would see.
As I look at them downtown, there's no, like, box down in the ground or anything like that that's a servant to it.
Yeah.
Does it make any noise or emit any light?
No. It emits radiation.
But we have telephone poles, so they could put one in my neighborhood.
They could put one in your neighborhood.
And where do they put it? In the right-of-way?
It's actually attached, and what they have done where there are telephone poles is they attach the device to the telephone pole itself.
Well, don't they need to get a right-of-way for that?
They are permitted to locate them in the right-of-way like any other utility. There's a fee that they will end up paying to the municipality to be in that right-of-way, and that's on an annual basis. Quite frankly, that fee is inconsequential in terms of revenue source. So right now, I believe, if you go down East McMurray Road in the vicinity of the existing high school, you will see a 5G tower.
But what about, like, the original grants of easements back in the day, like probably in my neighborhood, which was built in one of the '60s? I mean, it probably never even envisioned these. So how are they able to install something like that on my property subject to some easement that doesn't encompass that?
Well, I would suggest that what you have is a township-owned right-of-way in your neighborhood, and I don't know. Well, I believe that to be the case. I mean, I can verify that. But under the FCC ruling, they have a right to be in our right-of-ways.
So given that logic, I have concerns like you do about the residential areas, particularly in the southeast portion, where a lot of the new plans have underground utilities and there's a limited number of telephone poles. But related to that, the township does have space in some of these plans that is dedicated, open space. Would that fall outside of that, where potentially a tower could be located in an area like that?
And I don't know the answer to that for sure. We have been approached by one of the carriers with regard to small cell towers. And one of the things that I suggested to them was that the objection to these towers would be less if, in fact, they weren't in the front yard, that if you could take advantage of open space behind properties. But they're not anxious to do that because of the cost of having to locate in an area that they don't necessarily have easy access to.
So to extrapolate, one last question. If an HOA for development wanted to invite a carrier to install, would that be something that have to get a variance from the township about if we pass the ordinance the way it is?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that for sure, because what the ordinance regulates is the construction of these towers within the right-of-ways. So if you were to construct a tower that was on private property, I'm not sure how that's regulated, but I can attempt to answer that before we take action on it.
Right, it might be a question to be answered so we know. Thank you. You referenced rate sheets. There was not one included in the document?
I thought that there was a rate. Do you know that, is there a rate called out in the ordinance?
There is none.
I can get you what that rate would be. Like I said, it's inconsequential, it's insignificant. It's actually, there is a limit established by the FCC as to what's a reasonable rate.
Are there any questions from council? Were there any audience questions? Sir?
Yeah.
Please come up to identify yourself.
My name is Richard Myers, and I'm concerned about the current cell service in Peters Township. We have so many drop zones. When I try to, when I'm talking to a customer or something, it's just invariably you're making excuses for all these dropped calls, and they're everywhere. They're all along Thomas Road, they're all along East McMurray Road, Waterdam Road. And what I'm hearing tonight, even with the 5G, I live in the old section of Stonehenge that has underground utilities, what I'm hearing is, I'm not going to get any help with current cell service, and I won't have 5G either.
That remains to be seen.
It's a big concern of mine. You know, I run my sales operation out of my home, and it's very difficult to get cell service sometimes, so.
How big of an area does some of these towers have?
It's actually just hundreds of feet. It would take many of these in a plan to provide coverage for 5G.
I think we asked several sessions ago if we could get a coverage map from the cell services for the township.
Ryan, it's been working on that.
We did request those of AT&amp;T and Verizon. AT&amp;T provided us sort of, I guess it was their plan for maybe some cell tower locations, but they wouldn't give us a coverage map. Verizon never got back to us, Verizon Wireless.
So each one of these towers would only cover a couple hundred feet?
Several hundred feet, but it's.
Less than a thousand.
There would be multiple of these in any one plane.
So if you wanted to use Stonehenge as an example, you would probably need a hundred of them, at least, in order to cover that entire neighborhood.
I don't know whether it's a hundred, but it's more than a couple, yes.
The whole concept of 5G is that it's a micro-management of location, and that's why autonomous vehicles can operate with them. You know very precisely where something is. So, I mean, you're not talking hundreds, you're talking thousands of them in a township, really.
Well, I don't want to take any more of your time, but I would just hope that, you know, as a community, I think we have some leverage with the carriers. And I think that in several, through Stonehenge, there are several high-tension towers that have cell towers on top of them. I don't know that they're all, well, my particular problem is Verizon, but I don't know if they're Verizon or whose carrier, which carrier they are. But I just would implore you to try to find some solutions to today's problems, and then we can also look.
Yeah, I think we do need to solve today's problem, because I have a concern that it's going to be a long time before we see a 5G solution here. And I have a secondary concern that when the carrier companies find out that they are going to have a problem in places like Peters Township serving it with 5G, that they're going to go back to the regulators and say, hey, we can't do this, we need additional regulations, and we need the ability to put them anywhere we want, so.
They're not going to want to install a hundred of them in Stonehenge, you know what I mean?
They have to.
A very small area.
They have to.
That can't be cost effective.
But to make the system work, that's.
That's what they have to do. That's how it works.
I understand that. I'm sure they can figure out a way to do it definitely.
On your street, you would need 10 of them just to cover the span you live on, from the church up to Hoover. You'd probably need 10 of them.
I think what you'll see is that they'll address the highest-density areas first, where they can get the greatest revenue. You know, they're going to have to install hundreds of these things. They'll go after the urban areas first, then they'll come out to places like this last. But, I mean, we do need to address it in our ordinance. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, motion to close the hearing. Second? In favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing's closed. Okay, thank you. Let's haul for the recorder. Thank you. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 24th.
Still moved.
Second?
I think there was something, I think there was something in.
Is there a discussion on that?
It looked right to me. When I was looking through here, of course, I didn't write it down.
I did notice on the standard authority appointment, it mentioned that this was not there, but it still showed.
Right.
So.
There was one other.
Yeah, it did say that, it did say that you weren't here, Jim.
Also, Peters Creek was spelled wrong, too.
Anything else?
One other thing, no, I noticed it now. Under 5G, which was the award of the contract.
Don't say 5G, we just dealt with that, huh?
No, no, on the voting numbers, the motion passed, some are yes equals seven, no equals two, abstain equals one.
Yeah, that can't be right, right?
Math doesn't work. It's not Philadelphia.
The math's not working there.
And Mr. Chairman, related to that same.
It was four, two, one.
Right, related to that same item, I had it in addition. I asked Mr. Lauer to include my observation about the percentages, and based on the proposed cost, what the total payments to the contractor could be between $645,000 to $728,000, just so that the community has that documented. And second, there was a question about, that I asked about the percentage for the reimbursements, but the way the phrase was left, it wouldn't explain that, so just to add four reimbursables. And then last, under 5H, under council representatives for the design team, I would like them to include a sentence of who volunteered to represent council.
Okay.
And I did send these to Mr. Lauer part of the meeting.
All right, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Special reports, Mr. Lauer.
Yes, this is a very brief one. This is one worth standing up at the podium for. As council is aware, this September 17th is an important date in the township. It marks Mr. Zook's 30th anniversary as planning director for the township. I will tell you, and I've told Ed this earlier this week, I always have this image of Ed as being this youthful kind of guy, and when I realize he's been here 30 years, and then when I notice how much gray hair he has, that belies that youthful image. I did, with your indulgence, this is a short letter, one of the things that I have done since I've been manager, is people celebrate service anniversaries, is to send them a letter, and Ed will get this in the mail, but I would like to read it to council and for the community as a whole. Bob Elrich, former governor of Maryland, in a speech addressing the Maryland state legislature, said, "It's appropriate to celebrate public service and the thoughtful people who choose to serve. They symbolize what is good, decent, and we thank them. For the past 30 years, you have thoughtfully dedicated yourself to public service on the behalf of Peters Township. And in recognition of that service, Peters Township Council, our community, and I thank you. Planners play a unique role in municipal government. City planners permanently mold the physical structure of a community, and in doing so, they serve to define a community's character. Nowhere is that more obvious than in a community such as ours, which has been transferred, transformed from a quiet pastoral village into a vibrant suburban community. Within our region, Peters Township is viewed as an aspirational destination for families in search of a home. This is in no small part to your efforts over the past 30 years. Your professional skills are undeniable, but your real strength lies in your approach to serving everyone with respect, understanding, and fairness. I've worked with you long enough to know that you take great pride in helping others and solving their problems, whether they be significant or trivial. And as a result, you are a valued member of the township staff and a respected public servant in our community. Thank you for your service. There is still much to be done, and I am confident that our community will be able to meet our future challengers with your continued skilled guidance as planning director." So thank you, Ed.
Okay, I'm sure that all council concurs in that. Thank you very much, Ed, for your service. Special reports.
That was special reports.
That was special reports, I'm sorry. I meant to say, audience comments. We have quite a stack of audience comments.
And Dave, you have people here in the audience, too, that I believe have comments.
Okay, we have some submitted comments. How about we take the people that are actually here first that want to make comments? Who would like to make a comment?
Go first. Hi, my name is Stephen Simcoe. I live at 119 Meadowbrook Circle, and I wanted to take the opportunity to personally thank the council for using the two weeks of the buses going through my neighborhood and really look at it and evaluate it. Heeded some of the suggestions about opening up Bell Avenue, and it really alleviated the traffic. You guys stood by your word, and the buses have stopped coming through our neighborhood, and everybody in our neighborhood really appreciates that. So I really wanted to get that out, that I'm appreciative, my wife is appreciative, and a lot of people in the neighborhood are. The second thing that I wanted to bring up is that this unfortunately has been a reoccurring topic, where we have to come and either have an argument with the school board or with the council, not an argument, but come and try to defend ourselves and our position about the safety. I'd like to get council's opinion here and maybe even move forward where we could do one of two things. Have something in writing that this is, and forever shall be, only an emergency access for emergency vehicles, and school buses aren't going to come through. I think we've eliminated that concern with the traffic congestion with Bell Avenue being open. And the second option would be, because I don't believe that, at least in my time, no emergency vehicles have ever used that gate. I'd also suggest that we just eliminate the gate and put a permanent structure there, and this problem won't come back again for us. So I'd like to hear your opinion on those two options.
I would not be in favor of eliminating with a permanent barrier there. The eventuality of some need or reason, you know, just because we can't imagine what it is or it hasn't occurred, isn't sufficient enough, in my mind, to consider that.
I just look at all the other schools on McMurray Road. There's two exits out of each of them, PV, the high school, McMurray, and middle school. So having a third exit there seems excessive, I guess, that we don't need to.
I wouldn't be in favor of eliminating the gate either.
Okay, let's at least go to a point. Is there something that we can put in writing that we can? I know Mr. Lauer sent a letter, and he said it was suspended. Bus traffic is being suspended. I don't think that's strong enough, and I'd like to come to more of a permanent solution where we don't have to come and have this discussion with you every five to 10 years.
Well, I think we would disagree with what is classified as an emergency. In our opinion, we felt that at the time, it was an emergency. It's COVID-related. And so I keep hearing from residents over there that this wasn't an emergency, and in our opinion, it was. Now, we can argue whether that's right or wrong, but we felt we had to do something. And if you were there the first day, how bad the traffic was, you know, on East McMurray Road.
Can I make one comment on that? This topic came up 11 years ago about traffic congestion. Suggestions were made to open up Bell Avenue and alleviate the traffic. Within 11 years, not one change had been done. So come COVID pandemic time, we're going to ask more parents to drive, and we put, I mean, every, the school district put us in this situation where we're going to have more cars driving to a school where we already had a traffic congestion issue. Opened up Bell Avenue, and the traffic situation was alleviated.
But I would kind of disagree with you on one thing. It isn't just opening up Bell Avenue that made a difference. And I think the school district deserves a lot of credit. They saw that there was a problem, and they have completely altered how children are being dismissed out of that school over the length of period of time. And that probably has much to do with it as the situation with regard to opening up Bell Avenue to exit cars out. I think, quite frankly, I think the school district deserves a lot of credit for what they have done. And when it was obvious that there wasn't a need any longer, because in some regards, the traffic actually exits out of that school better now than it did last year when there were less cars, there was no need to have the gate open. And at that point, having met with Brad Rau and myself, we just decided that we would close the gate, so.
You know, I would agree with my colleagues that I don't think I would remove the gate and put a permanent barrier. There is potentially an idea that ambulance might go through there quickly if they were called. If it's not happened yet, that's great, but if it could happen or.
Understood, I can see that.
But that being said, I don't know if that gate is set up so that it can be opened on an emergency, or how quickly it could be utilized. If we're going to keep it, we should probably figure out a way to make that happen. But I do empathize with the parents, because the children in that plant are not picked up by buses. So to have buses go through the plant was a sort of an invasion. We're going to truck everybody else through there, but we don't pick up your own kids. So, you know, I think if we can avoid that in the future, I would be in favor of avoiding that unless there was some dire reason that we needed to use it again. And then if we did, that we go back and have a conversation with the neighborhood before we make a decision and open the gate.
I appreciate that. We're just looking for something a little more official than.
Well, I don't know what we can give you that's official, because you don't know what circumstance you have to address. That's the problem. You know, we have the, we need to maintain some flexibility. We can't put something in concrete that says, we shall never, ever, ever, ever do this. I think it works, you know. We hadn't planned on, you know, on what the situation that we have. We've addressed the situation, seems to be working, and I think we just need to go forward.
I understand. We're just looking for something that would.
I appreciate that.
More than just a letter.
Well, I appreciate that, but I don't know what anybody can do. I mean, suppose you had some piece of paper that said, you know, we don't want to do it except for whatever, and then some other situation arises and we have to. So what good is the piece of paper?
I guess then we could have a discussion with the neighborhood at that time.
I understand.
Okay, well, thank you for your time. I just wanted to, first off, thank you guys for doing what you did and listening.
We appreciate your patience with it. Thank you. And respect the fact that we did respond the way we did, and look to that same opportunity occurring should some other event unfold. I mean, we listened and.
Yeah, and I appreciate it. I think we all do.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Julie Simcoe, 119 Meadowbrook Circle. Just one quick question with regard to when this school was built. It just occurred to me while my husband was talking, all of the other schools do have two entrances, two exits. Why wasn't McMurray built that way?
Well, actually, they don't. PV only has one exit and one entrance.
Past the high school.
But all the other schools do, right? The high school, the middle school, Pleasant Valley.
I think Barre Hill only has one.
No, Barre Hill has two.
They have two. They have one off the road, what is that, Southern Combs?
No, they're both off of Barre Hill.
Yeah, they're, yeah, it's just a loop drive there.
So nobody knows.
I don't know that we could answer that. I think the school board built the school, they might have a better answer for why it was situated that way.
Just because the neighborhood was there first before the school was built, I would just think that they would have planned better when the school was built, that there would be.
Yeah, well, this isn't where the school gets designed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else in the audience? Okay, we have, the other option is to write a letter or an email to the township. Mr. Lauer, you want to cover these?
You have a email that's in front of you from Mr. Silva, who lives on Meadowbrook Circle, and it pretty much corresponds to the comments that are here in opposition to. to continued use of Meadowbrook Circle. You have a letter, an email from Tim Shannon in opposition to the police department. Let me read this. I don't know how to get this on the agenda, but I'm going to take a stance here and just to please put it on there, that somebody read this thing and read this email. I do not want any more police. We have more than we need. I don't want any more part-time police. I don't want any part-time police at all. No more cops, no more bureaucrats. We don't need to increase the budget. We don't need to add more administrative people, more parasites on the payroll. We need to look at reducing the budget, not increasing it. Stop spending money. Then you have one final...
Is this person even a resident?
Yes.
Well, I don't know whether he's a resident or not. He's apparently a business owner in town.
Does he have someone he knows two years ago? Because I didn't recognize the address. I don't know who that was. PMB, maybe? PMB 2, what's that?
Postal mailbox?
The other comment you have is from Mr. Donan at 107 South Creek Court. And Mr. Donan's concern centers around political signs. And I can just read part of this. Whenever definition you prefer, we look at Peters Township ordinance for the most relevant guidance for all many billboard political signs that we would likely pollinate our township for seven to eight weeks. And then he goes on to cite the provisions inside of the ordinance. And I think it's Mr. Donan's contention that many of the signs that are out there are in violation of the ordinance. So, the one thing we have been doing with regard to political signs is we've been paying attention to those signs that are, that represent safety hazards because they're put into site triangles. And in those particular areas, we are taking action. This year, particularly for the presidential election, there seems to be a lot of activities in Peters Township with regard to signs. And quite frankly, we have been trying to tread lightly with regard to those signs. They are political speech. Political speech is protected, and lots of people on both sides of that race have strong opinions, and I think we can tolerate these signs through this election period.
Okay. That's the, that's it for the audience comments. Is there any unfinished business? There is none. New business, request by McLaughlin Builders for departure from regulations contained in the Peters Township subdivision and land development ordinance.
So, Mr. Zook may have been here for many years, but even for Mr. Zook, we have novel issues at times. We have a plan that was drawn up in 1911 by the St. Clair Land Company and recorded in 1916. That subdivision created 18 lots that are located off of Washington Road. And over time, some of those lots were sold off and homes were constructed, including along TP Road, a portion of which is private and is a narrow gravel drive. As you can probably appreciate, that plan as it exists does not conform to current standards for subdivisions. McLaughlin Builders has entered into an agreement to purchase four of the lots in the Edgewood Estate Plan, and their intention is to subdivide those lots into six lots. And where that creates a problem is that our current regulations require that all subdivisions occur along public streets that are, that are developed according to township standards. And I don't even see how that's possible in this case. There is a 530-foot length of road prior to getting to where they own property that is a gravel driveway, and it's only part of the plan. What they want to develop extends past that, and they are prepared to develop that portion of the road in conformance with township standards, which would be a 50-foot right-of-way and a roadway constructed to township specifications with a cul-de-sac at the end of it. And what we believe as the staff, that is a reasonable compromise, given the situation, is that, first of all, that that in fact be the case, that all the lots that would be, that would be built upon would be on a 50-foot right-of-way with a road constructed and a cul-de-sac. That the existing gravel driveway be improved so that in fact it could accommodate two-way traffic. Someone said a button. That a road maintenance agreement be established, determine the maintenance of the private portion of the road. That a note be placed on the subdivision indicating that the road is in fact private and not to be maintained by the township. That a note be placed on the plan that we would not consider adopting the road into the township road system until the entire length was contained within a right-of-way and developed to township standards. And then the planning commission, when they looked at this, they also recommended that there be a statement that no new lots be created beyond the six proposed lots in the Tomahawk Plan without the remainder of TP Drive being paved to township specifications. So, I think it's a compromise. I think it's a way to address something that, quite frankly, is kind of unique. We have representatives from the developers here. Those are questions, I guess.
Oh, I got a question. The photographs that you have up there with the existing gravel driveway? No. Maybe it's the one of the dog.
Yeah. I guess I don't know.
But that runs from Moccasin back. Okay? And then there's parcels that are laid out in blue. Are those the, is that the parcels that they want to develop, or am I just...
Yeah. This is, these are the lots. And so, what you're doing is taking, these are large lots. What size are these? Do you know? Yeah. So, these are larger lots.
The far end of the road.
Yep.
So, the existing front of the road right off of Moccasin would remain gravel.
And private.
Theoretically be increased on the width.
Yes.
And you identified trees that they want to save or try to save. And then it would turn into paved road.
Yes.
At a certain portion.
Mm-hmm.
But are you proposing that none of it is considered township maintenance, even the paved parts?
None of it is. Because we can't get back to this paved section.
Right. So, what about the people who live on the gravel section? Were they at the planning meeting? Were they informed about this? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, there are some here.
And some are here.
Okay. Sorry. I just want to know what the people think about this whole thing.
Now, about infrastructure. What's back there? Is there sewage? Water?
Well, sewage has to be brought from Lariot, that's one down below.
Okay.
The developer's prepared to do that on the low side of the lot.
So, we could have fire hydrants and all that kind of good stuff?
Fire hydrants has already been installed.
Is this road going to be big enough to get a fire truck back and to turn it around?
It will be a township standard road on the portion that they are proposing to develop.
With the, if the road widened in gravel, in gravel, and this road, you'll be able to get a truck back. The other thing is you'll have a cul-de-sac that you can actually get back out.
Why are we, why are we leaving the gravel road?
I didn't, you know, the, what we could...
To me, that makes absolutely no sense. I mean, if you're going to pave the back portion, why wouldn't you pave the front portion?
That's a question for the developer.
Now, is that house, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay, Frank.
Say, now, the house that's on the property now, is that being demolished or are they subdividing around that?
Currently, it's just subdivided around. That's on a 7-plus acre park. When we, when we came to this property, we really had a couple of things in mind. Our niche market has been larger lots. We build our houses on, it's custom-built. We really wanted to find another parcel that was in the northern end of the township because they're kind of rare, and we came across this one. We had some plans drawn up and spoke to staff about it, and we decided to go towards larger lots instead of standard lots. The question comes into, why did we pave or want to pave the front part? We don't really own that. The approach to people, the Hess's on the left, to see if they wanted to participate. We actually had a meeting with all the residents, and they were great because we're not trying to impact their neighborhood, like come in and put 18 to 20 houses that it would fit. They have such a unique area, and they met with us. They all seem to understand and kind of realize that six is probably better than 20, and it's not going to impact them that much. And to work with Ed and staff, and, you know, we will have a maintenance agreement, not only to maintain the part that we paved, but we will also maintain the gravel part that we don't own. The simple fact is, is probably after we do our development, the Hess person on the left will probably subdivide their property and then pave the front part. Tried to buy it from them, just weren't willing to do it.
See, and I think one of the other things you have to keep in mind that I didn't say and I should have, this is a recorded plan. And if tomorrow someone came in for a building permit off of this gravel road, we would be required to issue them a building permit.
And we also have another lot off of Lariot that we combined into this, which is another lot.
Yeah.
And we really don't want to put traffic on the Lariot because that's terrible. Not to the people that live down there, but...
Could I ask you one question before you step away?
Sure.
About the maintenance agreement and your willingness to not only take care of the paved part but the gravel part? So, this plan that you're creating, will it have an HOA that would be doing that?
No. I'm not a big fan of HOAs. It would have...
Me neither, but, but then would it be directly with you personally?
Correct.
Okay.
For as long as you live.
Yeah, it might be a couple of years anyhow. But I think the planning commission was kind of funny. We've had a lot of interest in these lots. And Ed will probably tell you and the neighbors that live there, there was a lot of people that wanted us to keep it a gravel road. I mean, there was a lot of interest just to keep it a gravel road. People would say, well, that, that, how would they want to drive their fancy car on a gravel road? We had a lot of, it wouldn't affect the sales if it was a gravel road.
We've had some pretty negative experience with that on, like Nevin and Mount Blaine.
Yeah. And I live on one that I don't want.
I know. You've got a, it's kind of, sort of a gravel road. But, you know, our experience with minimum maintenance and gravel roads and so forth are that, you know, people will buy those houses, and it's about 15 minutes before they're on the phone with the township, like, you know, "You guys need to plow my snow."
Yep.
"The garbage truck can't get back here. I got dents in my car from the gravel." And I, I mean, I really don't like gravel roads for all the problems that they cause.
Well, and for those same reasons, they come after a little bit of knowledge of living there a while. That's why we were like, okay, our portion, and it's kind of funny, there's a person that lives at the end that the garbage truck doesn't make it back to her probably till May because the road is so bad.
Yeah.
Our road will go back, cul-de-sac, and she'll come off of that if I only have decent access.
What's, Paul, what's the road that goes down to the trail that we always have the problem with? Parking place on the trail?
Buckeye?
Buckeye, yeah.
Oh, Buckeye, yeah, yeah.
And that's another one that, you know.
Which one? Buckeye is the other one off of Valley. Buckeye in Valley. That's it.
Lenwood, yeah, Lenwood. But, I mean, I just, I just don't see how we can develop off of, you know, four, four lots of big and relatively expensive homes off a 500-feet of gravel road.
But technically, based on what Paul has just said, if it's a recorded plan, how can we prevent him? I mean, we can't technically prevent him.
That's how we got to this point. I came in to Ed and said, "Ed, I looked at this plan. I'm not an expert, but I'm pretty sure we already have the lots on here." And then do a series of meetings.
Yeah. Where you get to this is you can build on the lots as they are configured now. It's a recorded plan. But if you attempt to reconfigure the lots, now you're into a subdivision, and that what invokes these rules with regard to subdividing on a, on a, with access to a public street. Again, I think from my perspective, from Mark's and Ed's perspective, we think this is a reasonable compromise with a rather unique situation where you're dealing with a recorded plan from over there.
Well, I know. The plan surprisingly actually predates Mr. Lewis's time on council.
But only a couple of years.
I actually looked at a house on TP, I think.
I'd like to go back and see if you voted for it.
Is there a potential that this would extend through the cul-de-sac or would be completely terminated at that point?
It cannot go any further.
Okay. There was another...
It cannot go any further.
Okay. So, it's not like there would be other traffic that potentially would go through there?
Now, do we know, just out of curiosity, who has Lariot Road, which is below there? The piece of property that's in front of Mr. McLaughlin's property, and I should know this, but I don't, would the owners of that property be able to access their property through Lariot?
Yes.
So, there's always a chance that whoever buys that property decides they're not going to fix the gravel anyway and just come in from down below, right?
Well, Lariot down below is the same above TP. It would require that developer to approve.
No, understood, Ed. What I'm saying is, you know, as Mr. McLaughlin said, obviously, and he's probably right, that if we approve this, he develops his section, the people that own that piece in front of it does, are going to sell theirs. So, if we're going to contemplate, well, okay, whoever, once they sell that, whoever buys it's going to pave that, it may not necessarily be the case because they could just come in from down below, right?
They could, but if they do that, then we would require Lariot to be approved to township specifications.
Well, unless someone buys it to put in one house and just connects a driveway.
True, true.
But Ed, isn't Lariot already paved?
Only for a small little section, you know, as part of the Moccasin risk, and that's a temporary cul-de-sac.
Because there is a sign that says "Private Road"
Correct.
At the end of the cul-de-sac. So, that's where it leads to the other portion of the property because there are other houses already built on Lariot.
Correct.
Well, ultimately, it's Mr. McLaughlin who's taking the risk that he's going to be able to sell these lots to people who want to buy expensive homes and drive on 540 feet of gravel. So, I'll make a motion that we...
Oh, wait a minute. We have some public here.
From the audience, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
I think there's some neighbors or people from the neighborhood there. Is there anybody here that wants to talk about anything? No?
You have no comments?
Not really. We just wanted to hear what is being...
Are you in favor or not in favor or...
If I were in favor, if we were right adjacent to the kid property, would it cross House adjacent?
Okay.
All right. Then I will make a motion that we grant the departure from regulations contained in the Peters Township subdivision and land development ordinance for the purpose of developing the Tomahawk Plan of lots subject to the conditions proposed by the township staff and the planning commission.
I'll second. Any other discussion?
Yeah. I have to be along the side here of trying to find a way to get this unpaved portion of the road paved. I mean, I think we're just postponing a decision that's going to face a future council over that 500 feet.
Well, isn't the usual plan, I don't disagree, but isn't the usual plan, when something like that happens, we ask the residents to contribute and help pay for some of that development?
We would not take a gravel road and approve it to public standards using taxpayer dollars. That would never happen.
Right.
Yes.
All right. Motion second. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
Okay. Six to one, Mr. Lowery.
Next item is award of a contract under CoStar's Cooperative Purchasing Program to Jeffrey Associates for the purchase and installation of playground equipment in Peterswood Park.
In 2018, Peters Township was awarded a grand of $150,000 from the state of Pennsylvania for the purposes of constructing a playground in the area of softball fields, as well as doing a number of ADA improvements. We're in a position...
We're in a position now to be able to award a contract for the acquisition and installation of the playground. We have taken competitive proposals from multiple providers and have done so under the CoStar's program. It is the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Director and the Parks and Rec Board and myself that we award a, a contract to Jeffrey's Associates in the amount of $114,289.
Second. Other discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Change order number one, Libroney Incorporated Construction of Rolling Hills Transportation Improvements Phase Two.
So this is the project where we're making the connection back on Dewey Smith Road to service the high school and the new Rolling Hills Park. We discussed the first two of these with council previously. As you will recall, we went out to bid prior to having in hand all of the approvals from DEP as well as the Conservation District. And we did so realizing that the plan may be modified, but realizing that if we did go out to bid, we could never meet the timetable needed to have the intersection complete in time for the opening of school. So the modifications that DEP and the Conservation District insisted upon, the plan resulted in a change order of $29,109. In addition to that, because the start of the construction pushed the relocation of the stream into what turns out to be one of the hottest and driest summers on record, we had to be able to establish grass on the hillside prior to being able, that is on the bank of the stream, prior to being able to move ahead with the project. So they were doing daily watering out there and that activity, the cost for that was $8,325. Mr. Zemitis, in consultation with the project engineer, agreed that we could modify the way the culvert was constructed and that actually resulted in a savings of $7,241. So the change order number one is for $29,192. This represents 1.2% of the original contract amount. There's no time set adjustment on the contract as a result of the change order. So it's my recommendation and Mr. Zemitis's recommendation that we approve change order number one.
So moved. Second. Okay, any other discussion?
Yes. Who is incurring the cost for the utility relocation?
Well, we're extending utilities into the site to service the park. We're incurring that cost.
No, I'm talking about the relocation along McCorry Road.
Verizon, um, not us. That's all I have.
Yeah, the, I think in terms of, because it's on a state road, I believe, yeah, Verizon is assumed responsibility for, for moving all of those, those telephone calls and reestablishing the service.
I didn't think it was part of our scope of work, but yet I'm not, I'm surprised that there isn't going to be a.
You're right. Paul's right, since this, these utility relocates occur on state jobs all the time and I think the law says that the utility companies have to do that. Basically, it then costs whatever the state decides to be willing to, if you follow that.
Thank you.
Okay, moved and seconded, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okeydoke. Proposed property tax assessment settlement with HCR Manor Care.
Yes, they, HCR Manor Care appealed their property tax decision. Their property was, well, is currently assessed at $6,793,000. In front of the appeals board, they argued for a reduction to $5,586,000. And this was based upon applying the common level ratio. Their appraisal estimated the value of the property at $6,200,000. And with that, with that, the assessment board actually set the value at $6,200,000. We appealed that, which caused the property owner and the township's solicitor to enter into negotiations. And the settlement agreement that's in front of you today is for $6,000, $6,300,000 with, with a notation, in fact, the common level ratio does not apply. It's my recommendation that we approve that settlement. I think one of the things that is going to be interesting in speaking to the appraiser who has worked for the township on these nursing home appeals, he has a real concern that the value of nursing homes in light of COVID is going to be, may well be reduced going forward. And he believes that we, based upon that, ought to be willing to settle for the $6,300,000 and be comfortable with that settlement.
Where are we going to put all these senior citizens that need to go into a home?
But it's a question of what it is, it's a question of what the value of that nursing home is. And I think the argument's going to be that they're, that they're not going to be as valued as highly.
Because of the additional costs that they're going to incur.
Yeah, I disagree with that.
But this would only apply.
Plus, it's based on income.
This would only apply for 2020 anyway, right?
It'll apply for 2020.
They can come in next year anyway and argue that our costs have gone to the roof. So whether or not the home's going to be less valuable next year is irrelevant.
Oh, I think, I think it's going to be an interesting year next year.
So what does that mean with no application of the common level ratio?
Because if you take the common level ratio, it's a very simple calculation. It's one of the methods of determining value. And so when you take the common level ratio and apply it in this particular case, you end up with that $5,500,000.
Because, oh, that's the starting point, that's what you're saying?
Well, no, particularly on residential deals, that is a valid argument to go in with. On commercial properties, you also have to look at what are the revenues produced by the commercials properties? And you can't ignore that and simply apply the common level ratio. But on residential properties, you can go in and do this all the time.
Well, I think, and I think we can expect that we'll be buying them again next year. And I think you're right, Paul, that probably many of these facilities are going to use COVID as a basis to argue that their costs have gone up and their revenues have gone down, et cetera, et cetera. But I'll make a motion that we authorize the, we authorize Peacock Keller to enter into the stapled settlement subject to the school district agreeing as well.
Indeed, they have already.
Well, then, all right, I'll amend that to say, we just, I'll move that we authorize Peacock Keller to enter into the settlement agreement.
Second.
Any other discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Just as a note on that, we're going to have a, I would guess, an awful lot of these discussions again next year, so are we going to figure that into our budget?
Oh, I think I would agree with you. I think we need to be cautious with the property tax.
So we should probably just note that, that the loss of tax dollars to the township is less than $962.
It's not a lot of money, but it's just, it's.
No, but I mean, I think it's more for the school.
If it's the tip of the iceberg, I think is what you're saying.
It's just more common, is my, that's my point.
Okay.
Okay. Next item is award of a contract under CoStar's for Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program to Car Guild to purchase a brine system.
The 2020 budget includes an appropriation of $125,000 for the purchase replacement of a brine system. I make a notation in the mandatory report that that system's 20 years old. It's actually, it's actually 10 years old and was refurbished in 2016. The, Mr. Hurson and Mr. Castenella from the Public Works Department have spoken to various vendors and have talked to various municipalities concerning what is the best system for, for supplying brine in, for the township. They have settled upon the system that is offered by Car Guild. It's referred to as the AcuBrine System. It is available under CoStar's as well as the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. We have not used the Sourcewell Program that much in the past, but it is a cooperative purchasing program that is available to us. And in your docket is a memo from Mr. Smith indicating that in fact, we can purchase under that program. The proposal submitted is for $98,470. There's additional work that needs to be done at the site to accommodate this, and some of that work is underway right now, which includes bringing preface power into the site and, and constructing a containment area in case you had a ruptured tank. Our initial thought is to purchase two tanks so that we can use not only brine, but liquid calcium chloride. It may be, and it's Mr. Hurson's recommendation, that we look at purchasing a third tank in the future for.
Magnesium. Liquid magnesium.
Liquid magnesium chloride, which will even work at a lower temperature, so. But with that, it's going to be my recommendation that we award contracts under CoStar's and the Sourcewell Program to Car Guild for the purchase of a brine system.
So moved. Okay, any other discussion?
Just a clarification, this is only for the piece of equipment? The balance of the contract will still be paid out under capital, is that correct?
The other, the other work.
Right, the balance of the two, not the one.
As part of this project.
Will we back, come back to council or are you looking for?
Oh, no, the, the remainder of it does not require to come back to council because the, the cost of the tanks and the, the cost of the wires that they.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. Resolution granting the police chief in consultation.
Please vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did. Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The resolution granting the police chief in consultation with township manager the authority to determine staffing levels.
In, in 1982, council passed a resolution establishing staffing levels for the weekend. What I am suggesting and what Chief Grimes is requesting is that we repeal that ordinance and that we, that resolution and give to the chief the, the authority to determine staffing levels, whether it's weekends or during the weekdays. One of the things that he was here that he would be telling you is that what has changed is that the activity levels are all in the daytime now. This, you know, when this was adopted, apparently there were issues with evenings on weekends and those are not busy times anymore for the police department.
Does this potentially eliminate the record in the police report that says minimum staffing?
No, because what that, in that report talks about, Peters Township Council established a goal, not a requirement, but a goal, that, that we have certain staffing levels. And what that, in the report talks about is, is their ability to meet that goal. So this would not change that. You would still look at that same kind of thing.
Yeah, I think we talked about this at some length a couple of meetings ago. So is there a motion? Second.
Second.
Other discussion?
I do have a clarifying question. You cite the Friday and Saturday, the weekends, but this is somewhat open-ended, so this then implies that he can make other adjustments?
He can, right now, I believe that at a minimum, he needs to have three people on weekends, but he can staff at any level. And sometimes we staff at four and sometimes we staff at five, and that all has to do with what events are occurring. So one of the things that you'll see in the, in the labor contract that talks about increased staffing days, so we have days like community day where we have all the, a lot of the officers out. We have holidays where, or graduation weekends where we have more people out, so just.
So this applies strictly to staffing with the number of police we've already approved to be on staff?
Right, yes. Yeah, it doesn't mean more people.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next item is the labor agreement with the Teamsters Local 205 representing Peters Township Police.
Yeah, we have entered into a tentative agreement with Teamsters 205 representing the Peters Township Police Officers. The agreement has been approved by the union and they are prepared to sign it. It's a four-year agreement that commences in January of next year and extends to December of 2024. It calls for wage increases of 2.25% in 2011, 2.25% in 2022, 2.5 in 23 and 24. I think this is a very fair agreement. I think they, I give Carl Bailey, who's the business manager for the Teamsters, and particularly I give credit to Sergeant Davis to be willing to enter into discussions with us and realization of what's happening around us with regard to COVID and what the potential impacts of that are. So I, I think what you're looking at is a very fair agreement. One of the things that I provided council tonight is at your desk, there's a comparison to show you where we are with neighboring communities, and I think we compare well. In addition to that wage increase, there are a couple of things I think that are significant. The, the officers in the department will be subject to our drug and alcohol policy and will be classified as safety sensitive positions. We've increased the amount of the deductible from 500 to 750, which places them in line with everyone else. There is at least a rudimentary start at establishing residency because now all new hires will be required to locate within at least 15 miles of the township. And then there are other things in there that are going to help us with scheduling. Right now, the month of November, December are very difficult to schedule inside the police department because of vacations and holidays and personal days, and this begins to address that. So I strongly recommend that council approve this agreement.
So moved. Second. Discussion. Seeing none, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Payroll and bills?
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the pay report and the account payable bills. Council can see there are some larger payments for capital projects which were previously approved. I move that we approve the bills and pay them as presented.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Correspondence?
We have a letter in, from individuals that are located near Snyder and just about road, expressing concern over that intersection. We're going to have Mr. Mudry take a look at that and then based upon his recommendations, be in contact with Pendock to see whether or not there is a need to address their concerns, so.
Okay. All righty. Anybody need to talk about any minutes from any of the other boards and authorities? Miscellaneous?
Mr. Chairman, before you go on, will we be getting minutes from the aquatic design committee?
Well, we didn't really do minutes from the first meeting. If we need to do minutes, we can do that.
And we have not set a second gathering.
You pronounce a summary so we know how things are progressing and what's being discussed. I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, miscellaneous? David, my comment would be with the pending, what do we call it, Halloween events coming up, does the township want to take any position with regard to?
In effect, that's one of the things that I have written under miscellaneous because we're getting telephone calls and here's my recommendation. I personally think that we ought to do is just simply do Halloween as we have always done Halloween. If you are a resident and you want to participate in Halloween, you turn your light on and kids can come to your door.
Amen.
If you choose not to participate in Halloween, you should just leave your light off and, and people should respect the fact that you, you choose not to do that. In terms of children and their safety, I think that's a decision parents can make. And so if you're, if you have a concern that this is not a healthy activity, you can have your kids stay home. And then, and one of the things that the rec department is doing is offering some alternative like trunk retreat as a way to allow kids to have a Halloween experience. If you're comfortable with your children going out door to door to collect candies, then you can make that decision after doing it. It should be on October 31st, rain or shine, at the same time as we always do it. And that's what I think we should be doing.
Yep.
Good plan.
Everybody can wear a mask anyway, right?
That's right.
Yeah, really.
Throw a picture on your mask.
It probably is the safest Halloween we can have.
Safest Halloween ever.
And this is the only time where the people in the house and the people at the door will be wearing masks, so.
Okay, all right. Anything else under miscellaneous?
Yes, we had a, a virtual meeting with Pendock to talk about the roundabout at Valley Grove and Bebop Road. This is a rendering of, of that. We're being asked to provide them some reaction to the design. The one thing that I wanted to talk to council about is that on their design, and they're doing this in relation to our comprehensive plan, they have included sidewalks around the roundabout. I personally think that allowing the space to accommodate a sidewalk. I, I personally think that allowing the space to accommodate a sidewalk in the future makes sense, but to provide these sidewalks now, I think, creates a problem because particularly when you're headed down this right way, there is no way to get there walking. So I talked to the representative from Pendot, I think with our direction, if we tell them, leave the space, give us an expanded burn, so that in fact, at some point in the future, sidewalks make sense that we could do that, so, but that's a council decision.
That could be a bad claim.
All right.
Uh, I think what they're going to do with bikes is I think you're going to throw them in the middle of the, the roundabout. But is everybody okay with that?
Why, why make the, the actual roundabout thing so big?
Like, why, why would that be?
Radius of the turn.
Well, there's, there's actually a design standard that determines this circle, sides this circle.
Go over to the, and the one on road. Yeah? No, it just seems huge. You know what I mean? It could make a spot.
As of right now, that's green, and I think that that's, I think that's appropriate, and I think we can maintain grass.
I think we should plant trees, though.
Well, and I think that's another possibility, but I do think that this should not be a paved area.
Are you allowed to plant trees in the center?
I, I don't know what the land's doing. I think we should put one of those big.
Five G towers in there.
That would be, would be the other thing that they have done.
House within a 200 feet that it would help, so.
I thought that the plan that they showed on the meeting had foliage and bushes or trees.
Sweet pool for aquatic center.
I don't know that.
I know when people drive.
Let's not design that tonight.
Now, but I think what you said makes sense, Paul, I'm, I'm okay. The other thing that they have proposed, and I think this is a good idea, they, they would like to take our, our poles that we have in the McMurray Town Center and surround the roundabout with those poles, and I think that's a good idea. And these would be lit.
Agreed.
So, so I will let, I will let, I will let them know that. You can ignore the zoning hearing board report because the, the case that is coming up has been withdrawn.
Excuse me, I didn't want to ask about, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask about the zoning hearing board. Mr. Kuntz provided the report, but he didn't list who was there, I guess it was a full quorum.
Well, this.
Counsel.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Counsel sort of recommended, I thought, that we suggested that they realign the building, but do I understand that Mr. Robinson's variances were approved, both of them?
He's got here. Um, I don't know the answer to that question. My understanding is that the building is smaller in size than was originally planned and, and, but I don't know the answer to what you're asking.
Are you talking about this September 15th hearing?
Yes.
Is it off?
What's that?
Is it off? I thought you said it was withdrawn or?
The, the, no, what, what Mrs. Merrill's talking about is Mr. Robinson's decision. What they're, what I was saying is withdrawn is the hearing that's coming up, that was going to come out later this week.
Counsel was asked about.
This one about the garage?
Yes.
That's off?
That's off because what was discovered is that there's a utility line in that area. Mrs. Merrill, I'll take one, I will get you an answer to that tomorrow, I'll give you a call.
Thank you.
Anything else under miscellaneous?
I'd just like to thank the police department for providing the information about how our police participate with Chegg Hog. Thank you very much for getting that information.
Okay, anything for the next agenda?
Could we have an update on where we are with the census? Do we need to encourage people to respond, or are we doing good as a township?
We'll find out what the participation is.
Okay, anything else?
I did want to know about the speed limit signs on Bevout Road. Mr. Currie, Mr. Stever, and I have all been contacted by that gentleman and shared the response from Pendot.
They're going to let's move this on?
We've actually reached out to, I spoke to Brian Walker. They were holding off on doing the speed counts on that until the utility work along that gridway was done, because it would have completely distorted the counts, but, yeah. They do, they do.
Do we have an executive session?
What's that?
Do we have an executive session?
No.
Okay, so, nothing for the next agenda?
Um, yes, an update on the board's participation, and if, I know Mr. Chrome asked people to respond if they were interested in being reappointed, so if not for next meeting, perhaps a meeting in October, so we can get an idea of how many we have to recruit for.
That's our call.
Thank you.
Okay. Or Jern?